Good evening. The adequate notice of this regular meeting is required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January nine, two thousand and twenty-three. This notice was on that date, on those dates posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News, and tapped into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise and stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
I will call the roll. Mr. Desai. Mrs. Mrs. Whitebaum.
Here.
Ms. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Otto.
Here.
Mr. Tor.
Here.
Mr. Valentino.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
Mr. Bazey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten four dash eleven, permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss specific prospective or current employees unless all who could be adversely affected request an open session. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately thirty minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
All those in favor?
Second person.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I proceed?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The board is going to executive session. We will meet in room four A.
Yep.
Yep.
Gonna wait until.
Should return to open session?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I. opposed? Abstentions, the board has returned to public session, public open session, excuse me. Minutes.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three board meeting.
Second.
Second.
Shall I call?
I'm sorry, yes, please.
Mr. Desay?
Yes.
Mrs. Fightbomb?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Correspondence and information, I will turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Brazil. There were, the board received two emails regarding school calendar in the Hib report. There were four investigations, one at ALT that was not HIB, one at the middle school that was not HIB, and one at Woodland that was, and one at Woodland that was not HIB. And on the suspension report, there were three in school and one out of school suspensions reported at Woodland. Nothing else for that section.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for coming out here tonight. Always fun to be at our schools. Go Gators. Couple items of note, myself and a couple board members, as well as some of the administration team, had the opportunity to attend the crescent lighting earlier last Thursday, excuse me. Last, last week, our middle school choir also performed at that, exceptional as always. So thank you for the board members who were able to take the time to come out. I know it's challenge with schedules. I get it. Thank you to administration as well. We had some building principals in addition there. So it was a fantastic turnout. It was a very nice event and we're thrilled to be invited. So thank you for that. I want to draw the board's attention to a few items on the agenda. Item B seven, the, the board wants to thank Mila's debut School of Music for their very generous donation to the district. Items C one, C two, C three, C five, we have a lot of welcoming to do for our growing districts. So certainly welcome to all those employees and substitutes to our district. And I wanted to call the board's attention to item C four. Our, our departures, two in particular. Mrs. Johnson with over twenty-five years of experience to our district. Thank you very much for all you've done for all of our students, our district, our community. And Dr. Ressa, by all means, we, we, I can't say enough good about you. You, those shoes are big. So thank you for all you've done. You're here at the meetings every time. And, and just always smiling and always helpful and just able to help wherever you are. So thank you. Best of luck to you. It's certainly, you know, bittersweet to see you go. So thank you again for everything you've done. It's much appreciated. And with that, I will turn over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Brazil. Just a couple of quick announcements, and then I do have comments later on with the business agenda items, but two celebrations at the middle school. We have a champion team in first place, the Association of Mathematics Teachers of New Jersey Eleventh Annual Middle School Statewide Math Contest. So congratulations to our middle school math team that won the state championship. And just this past weekend, we're first runners up in the National Geography Challenge. They beat teams from Michigan, Iowa, and Washington DC before losing to Howard Middle School from Georgia on the very last question of the entire competition. It came down to the very last question. So congratulations to our students at the middle school for both of those competitions. And that's it for right now.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Uh, we are going to turn it over to Principal Cook. Got the Gators here with us tonight. Thank you. Always a pleasure, if you would not mind.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for coming to Mount Horr. Welcome board members, welcome audience members. We are here to talk about and learn about a fabulous program here at Mount Horr called Preschool Pals. I've been asked to say nothing more because the incredibly well-dressed professionals to my right will do all the the heavy lifting tonight. These, this group has worked very hard for a number of days, weeks. Under the leadership of Mrs. Letterman and Mrs. Runfola, Mrs. Runfola is a speech therapist in preschool. Mrs. Letterman is one of our phenomenal specialized teachers. Also, Mrs. Zagombic has been helpful behind the scenes with the presentation. So without further ado, thank you again for coming. I now give you our students.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Good evening and welcome to Mount Horr's presentation on preschool pals. I am Stacy Letterman and I am a special education teacher here at Mount Horr who co-teaches with Mr. Jones.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nicole Runfola. I'm the speech therapist here at Mount Horr's preschool program. Four years ago, I co-created the Special Education Committee with the most fabulous preschool teacher Debbie Inglis. In order to bring awareness, woo, go Deb. In order to bring awareness to both staff and students on a variety of topics related to special education. We currently have over fifteen amazing, amazing staff members in our committee and including, of course, the absolute best, Miss Letterman.
After one of our meetings, it dawned on me that since our preschoolers are so young, there are some activities that are harder for them to participate in. In my twenty-four years of teaching in Warren, I've taught every elementary grade except preschool. But I was still drawn to them and felt this connection. So I met with Mr. Cook, and then I met with a colleague who has one of the biggest hearts I've ever known, Mrs. Runfola. And without wasting a beat, she excitedly joined me on this amazing adventure I call preschool pals.
So our vision of preschool pals was to integrate both our preschool students and our K through five students in order for everyone to feel more connected as one big happy Mount Horr family.
Every month, a different grade has the opportunity for their students to engage with preschoolers during their gross motor time. Students are broken up into small groups and each group meets with preschoolers for twenty minutes twice a month.
We really wanted this to be a memorable, special, and meaning time for all the students involved. We wanted them to really foster their relationships, make connections, and strengthen their social emotional learning skills.
It has been heartwarming to see students shine in ways we might never have known.
So without further ado, let's introduce our absolutely amazing Mount Horr students, beginning with Cole.
Welcome to our presentation on preschool pals. We have represented this from grades three, fourth, and fifth. I'm Cole Vera.
And I am Brielle Weinstein.
First, we are going to go over the goals and expectations of preschool pals. First, we help everyone feel like they belong in Mount Horr community. Other students were role models and leaders for younger students. Preschool students use the communication board and their iPads to help them communicate with others. Students practice their speech and language skills. Students grows, grew socially and emotionally as they made new friends. Everyone learned the importance of being patient and kind.
This is a picture of me using the communication board with my preschool pals. Here are some of the games that we play. We taught the kids how to kick a soccer ball and strengthen their gross motor skills. Also, we helped the kids throw balls into the buckets for hand-eye coordination. Then we helped them play Mr. Fox to help them follow directions in class. Lastly, they enjoyed rolling hula hoops down the hill and chasing after them.
Fourth grade level representatives. Elizabeth Clark.
I'm Jordan Foo.
What we learned and what they learned. We learned that it's fun to play with younger students. They watched us very closely, so we had to be good role models. Preschoolers were curious and wanted to learn.
For those of us who went to preschool here, we wish we would have had the opportunity to spend time with older students and make new friends. When I was here at preschool at Mount Horr School, I might have not had a lot of friends, but if I spent time with older kids, I would have had lots of fun. They learned how to play on the monkey bars and their new words like chalk, car, and fence. They learned how to go down the slide. And lastly, they learned how to take turns and how to be patient.
Games we played. We played hide and seek with them.
We helped them safely climb the rock wall.
We played tag because they love to run around.
And lastly, we helped them play games like soccer and catch.
Hello, I'm Isabella Gerzma.
And I am Andrew Yanish.
What we did with our pals.
Spent time with all of the preschoolers so we can make new friends. They were so happy to see us. They saw us as big brothers and sisters.
We gave them their own choices of what they'd like to do, helped them communicate the communication board, and helped them socialize with new people. Games we played.
When we were outside, we role played as characters in a movie. We taught them how, we played basketball and taught them how to throw a ball.
We played on the merry-go-round and had a lot of fun. We taught them new hand clapping games like avocado. Enjoy the video.
Thank you so much for watching our presentation. Do you guys have any questions about our preschool pals program? Thank you for watching.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cook, they left us speechless. That takes a lot to keep this board speechless. Wow. Well done. Simply amazing. Fantastic. Our next item on the agenda is a special recognition that we have, and fittingly enough, we are at Mount Horr School. So just for a little bit of background, then I'm going to turn it over to Officer Task, who is one of the three fine members of our police department who has, have joined us tonight. So thank you for coming out tonight. Uh, on the, on the afternoon of February twenty-third, there was a very serious and very severe automobile accident outside of our school here. So Mr. Task, if you could come up and provide a little bit more context, Mr. Cook and Nurse Zanichelli, I believe were instrumental. Go from there. That's fine. Perfect. That's, no, whatever you say.
You're not getting stopped right now. Did they come up?
Uh, so Mr. Cook and actually we have two, we'll honor them after, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll present them to awards with yourself. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I kind of got thrown into it. I wasn't exactly prepared to do a speech there. But as, as it was alluded to, there was a severe motor vehicle accident in front of the elementary school, very, very close to dismissal time. Very rarely, well, I should say, as much as we try with my fellow officers here to keep a safe community and stuff, we're not completely immune to bad things happening in Warren. Especially car accidents and as such. And it's not every day that we have citizens jump up to render aid and to be a part of the team. And on top of that, it's not every day that we have well-trained citizens that actually really help us in, in solving the issue at hand. On that day, Nurse Zinchelli, pronounced it right, all right, and Mr. Scott jumped into action. And they were instrumental in the team to make sure this gentleman got the proper care. And then shortly thereafter, Officer Campanelli arrived, and then Officer Masterson and myself to render aid to this gentleman to essentially save his life and get him out of here onto higher care into the hospital. And it was quite head thick, as you can imagine, because it was dismissal time. And everything that we needed to do, including the potential of landing a helicopter on site for this gentleman, we just mentioned it to Mr. Cook, and he made whatever he had to make happen, happen in the school to keep the kids safe, the community safe, the parents aware of what was going on, and enabled us to do our job without thinking twice. And to have that peace of mind during those instances is, is more than words can describe because it's not every day that we get that help and that quality of help on a moment's notice without even thinking twice. So I can't express my gratitude to them too. As both myself, my fellow officers, and our department. And it's great to have such qualified people, not only here in town and to, to help us, but to be a part of the school system, to be a part of the school that I used to go to back when I was a little one like these guys, which great presentation, by the way. It's, it's really reassuring and puts us at peace of mind that if we ever needed to come here and to lean on the resources here, we know that they'll be here and I'm sure it brings peace of mind to the parents as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And we also have two certificates of recognition if Mr. Scott Cook and Nurse Zinchelli would care to be honored as well as all along with our Warren's finest. Go Gators. So while we would never ask anyone to leave a board meeting, if you would like to leave, now is a good time, and perhaps you were here for your student. It would be an opportune time. You're welcome to stay. This is the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion item. This is the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, Assembly Resolutions. Uh, just as a note, the next New Jersey School Boards Association meeting for delegates is on May thirteenth. As of approximately fifteen minutes ago, there were no resolutions posted to the website for the board to discuss further. So therefore, we will not, we will unfortunately not have anything here. If there's anything that does become available. Actually, would you mind leaving one of those open? Just one, if you don't mind. Would you, can leave one open? I know it's loud, but it's, it's an open meeting. I don't want to. Thank you. Uh, if, if this does become available, I will work with Mr. Hagel, Dr. Mingle, to get this out to the board prior to the, to the meeting, to make sure we all have the latest information. Next on the agenda is committee reports. First is the Curriculum Technology, Curriculum and Technology Committee. Mr. Valentino, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Brazil. The Curriculum Technology Committee had a meeting on March twentieth at Woodland School. We discussed the process of getting the curriculum established and passed for the phys ed and health curriculum. We spoke about having a public session meeting, which was announced through superintendent updates. We spoke about having a public session meeting, which was announced through superintendent updates and updates to the community via email. And that meeting was held on 4/17 last Monday. I want to thank the members of the community and board members that came out to that meeting. I think we had a really productive meeting and we got a lot of things talked about. Our next curriculum meeting is going to be on May 15th. And again, we're looking to have the health and phys ed curriculum updated and passed by June. So we are actively working on that and stay tuned for more.
Thank you, Mr. Valentino. Next on the agenda is Finance Operations and Security Committee. This is Zon.
Thank you, Mr. Brizzy. The Finance Operations and Security Committee met Monday, April 17th. Present were the Superintendent Business Administrator, Mrs. Smith, and three of the four committee members. Joining us at 5:15 was Mr. Laramore. The first item on the agenda was a discussion of the lunch alternatives for the 23-24 school year. Throughout the last six months, the administration has been exploring options for the provision of National School Lunch Program compliant lunches for the 23-24 school year. The process has disclosed a sparsity of vendor options for this county and correspondingly for the school district. To address this, the district's approach to next year's lunch program has been expanded to include the possibility of an SFA to SFA relationship. An SFA is a school lunch authority. We are an SFA. Other SFAs include districts that have existing school lunch programs and kitchens, usually operated by food service companies that work on location for the provision of meals. This differs from a vendor that prepares food at an independent location, such as was used in the year before last. On April 12th, Mr. Hagel, Dr. Mingle, Mr. Brizzy, and I met with a food service provider that works out of numerous school districts in close proximity to Warren. The purpose of the meeting was to gauge the complexity and interest in forming an SFA to SFA agreement, where one school district contracts with another rather than relying on the eight commercial vendors available in Somerset County, none of which are in close proximity. I want to stress our appreciation for the provider's willingness to meet with us and help in exploring an SFA to SFA option. This provider or any provider that we work with will, of course, be one that takes the greatest pride in the service that they provide. It is important to note that any such provider would be delivering lunches that are prepared in another kitchen and transported for service into our schools. There's simply no way that lunches provided in this way will compare to the quality and quantity of options that could be made available if we had a kitchen of our own. Compliance with the NSLP and doing it with food that is brought in from outside the district will require compromises. Any food service provider that partners with the Warren District does so because of a sincere interest in forming a relationship that hopefully will lead to other opportunities if and when a kitchen is constructed. It is my sincere hope that as we proceed with this process, all stakeholders will understand the importance of building such a relationship. It is likely that the district will have to expend monies to support any program during the 23-24 school year. We do not yet have definitive numbers. District administrators were asked to reach out to Watchon Hills Regional High School to see if they could, would consider joining us in an SFA, SFA relationship. We have been subsequently advised that the food service contractor at the high school is not able to consider such an arrangement at this time. There will be more definitive information for the next committee meeting. The committee supports moving forward with an SFA to SFA option, assuming one is available. We had a continuing conversation regarding the possibility of kitchen construction for the 24-24, five school year and beyond. The last set of committee meetings discussed construction options. That conversation will be ongoing. A necessary first step is to undertake a hydrological study of the entire Warren Middle School property. We are aware that the property does consist of some wetlands. The committee supports moving forward with that study and the administration will be taking steps necessary to get a fresh, a wetland study performed. At 5:15, we moved on to, 5:15 of that meeting, we moved on to a discussion of the security report. We have received four of five full slideshow's from the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office and have received also from our security, in-house security experts, a summary of the presentations that the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office has made. The committee discussed highlights from that summary. The next step will be the administration undertaking the work to develop a multi-year plan to address any recommendations made by the SCPO. Further conversations will take place at the committee, Finance Committee meetings on May 8th to design such a process through which such recommendations will be reviewed. This is a reminder to the board members that information with regard to the security reports is confidential. We will be making the full slideshow's available at the board office for board members as soon as all five of them have been received. And if any board member has additional comments, questions, they can certainly reach out to myself, Mr. Brizzy, or Dr. Mingle with any questions. We had a brief conversation discussing the role of treasurer for the district. And as at this point in time, we were, we were running out of time and one of our committee members had to leave. And so we were down to two committee members. We tabled until the next meeting substantive conversation with regard to end of year purchases. There are two items appearing on the agenda tonight for approval and they are the bids for the fire alarm projects that were contemplated in the referendum. That is item B9 and the HVAC system work in the referendum, which is item B10. A new revised budget for the referendum items has been prepared that accounts for the fire alarm and HVAC bids. Patients has paid off. You will notice that the bids for the fire alarm and HVAC and other costs have resulted in a new budget that is well within the initial construction budget. In other words, the budget that projected costs in excess of the initial budget by 1.3 million have now been adjusted downward. This provides welcome relief to the pressure that has been put on our capital reserves. The committee recommends moving forward with referendum project bids to the full board for discussion. Do bear in mind, however, at this point in the meeting, we were down to two committee members. The next meeting of the finance committee is on May 8th. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Zon. And finally, the Personnel Negotiations and Communications Committee. I do not believe we had anything, Ms. Keller. Is that correct? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the budget hearing. So this evening's meeting does include our required budget hearing for the next fiscal budget. This will be very similar to public commentary. If any member of the public wishes to provide feedback to the board regarding the budget, this would be your opportunity to do so. There will be two additional public commentary sessions, as there normally are after this. This is strictly for budget-related items. This essentially public commentary. If there's any member of the public who wishes to share feedback, comments with the board, please state your name and address and we would be very open to hearing your feedback. We will start in the room. If there's anyone in the room who wishes to provide feedback regarding the budget to the board. Seeing none, if we will also go to Zoom, if there's any member of the public that wishes to provide feedback or comments to the board regarding the proposed budget, please use the raise your hand feature as well as use your camera. I'm not seeing anybody. I don't, part of the, part of the curtains, I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Okay. May I have a motion to close the budget hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Budget hearing has concluded. We will now move on to public commentary. So if there's any member of the public who wishes to provide comments or feedback to the board regarding agenda items only, this is your first opportunity to do so. There will be an additional public commentary at the, towards the end of the meeting for any topic. This one is strictly for agenda items only. Please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to address the board. We would certainly welcome your feedback. Similarly, we will start in the room here in person. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public comments on any agenda items? Yes, please. If you would not mind going to the microphone, thank you. And your name and address once you're ready.
Hi, my name is Philip Jones. My address is 8B down the hall. I am also the, I'm a teacher here at Mount Horup and also the vice president of the Warren Township Education Association. I just wanted to reiterate how thankful we are for the recognition for Mr. Cook and Mrs. Zinchelli and all the staff during that, you know, traffic accident. It was a pretty amazing thing to be a part of and everybody stepped up and did everything that needed to be done. And also want to congratulate Mrs. Letterman and Mrs. Runfola. They're two of the people that would never ask for any credit for anything and they really do deserve a lot of credit. The hours that they put in on that project. You know, she doesn't eat lunch with me anymore because she's working with kids. I'm not going to take it personally. But she and Mrs. Runfola worked really, really hard and it's such a wonderful program to see kids who may not have a lot of other opportunities to shine. It's really a wonderful moment for them and to give all of the kids the chance to work with their younger peers is really fantastic. So I really think it's living up to the shining brighter every day mantra. So I wanted to say congratulations to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other members of the public who wish to provide comments in person? Moving to Zoom, if there's any members of the public who wish to participate in the first public commentary for agenda items, please use the raise your hand feature and enable your camera in Zoom. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the first public commentary?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The first public commentary has concluded. With that, we will move on to items for board consideration in action. Dr. Mingle, is there any comments you have?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brizzy. Just a few comments on the section C, which is our hiring section. So this is the meeting of the year where we start to transition from the current school year to the next school year. And actually, on this agenda, you see a little bit of both. So I want to highlight a few things. First on item C11, make sure I get the numbers right. Just wanted to highlight that one of our current bus monitors did the yeoman's work of going through the process of becoming a certified CDL driver, which gives us an additional license driver for our buses, which is why she's on the agenda today for an adjusted rate so that when she's covering for us as an extra bus driver, she's compensated as such. It's not an easy thing to get a CDL right now and we've been working for several years on trying to help our staff make that happen. So we want to congratulate and thank Marcella for doing that for us. I also wanted to mention that item C13 and 14, at first glance, probably look a little bit stark, daunting. That is the annual process of recalibrating based on the budget. So the budget's on tonight's agenda and this reflects the budgeted staff positions. And in most cases, it's simply moving somebody from a fourth grade position to a third grade position or something like that. This year's case is a little bit more complex because we're also moving staff to follow the students who are moving as part of the rezoning process. So it's actually not a net change of very many overall positions, but it looks like a lot because of people moving from one school to another. So I wanted to highlight that as well. And then to follow up on item C4, which goes along with C15, we always like to thank our members of our staff who are moving on in their careers, but I want to highlight Dr. Ressa as a member of the superintendent's cabinet as the director of special services for his commitment to the school district. Moving on to a great opportunity in a, to oversee a very large special education department in a pre-K through 12 school district, which actually, for those of us that live in the K8 world, we don't always realize that actually means until people are age 21 through transition services. So congratulations on that new opportunity. And along with that, we are also excited to put forward a recommendation to hire Mrs. Molly Lang, who's sitting with Dr. Ressa as our next director of special services. So thank you for following through on this process, very expedited. And as anybody who's been hired as an administrator and Warren can tell you, rigorous process that we go through as we're making these important recommendations to the board. So thank you as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Are there any board members who wish to pull any item for a separate vote? Have a discussion on any item? Question any item? Seeing none? Mrs. Zon?
Thank you, Mr. Brizzy. I will read C15 separately. So the first motion will be motion to approve items for board consideration, section 15A, 1 through 6, B, 1 through 11, C, 1 through 14, and D, 1 and 2.
I'll call the roll. I mean, I'll call the vote. Mr. DeSey?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitebaum?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zon?
Yes.
And Mr. Brizzy?
Abstain?
Motion to approve item for board consideration, section 15, item C15, which reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education approves the contract of Molly Lang, employment dated April 24th, 2023 between the Warren Township Board of Education and Molly Lang for the position of Director of Special Services for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. A copy of the contract is on file at the Board of Education office.
Second.
I will call the question. Mr. DeSey?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitebaum?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zon?
Yes.
Mr. Brizzy?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Moving on to unfinished business, I do not believe there is any similar for new business, which brings us to our second public commentary. This can be on any topic. If any member of the public wishes to address the board, you have three minutes to do so. Does not have to be on an agenda item, can be on any topic. The board would be gracious to hear your comments and feedback. If you could state your name and address, we will start in the room. If there's anyone in the room who wishes to provide public commentary for any agenda item, I'm sorry, for any item. Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, good afternoon. Isabel Bonato, 54, Green Valley Drive. My question is going back to the topic regarding the school lunch program for the following school year. So my understanding from the explanation was that we are no longer considering doing an RFP for a food service provider, but instead potentially partnering up with another school district and using whoever they use as the school food provider? Is that my understanding?
So we will, I apologize. We'll do our best to share feedback after, if we want to give you your three minutes to talk. I don't mean it to sound harsh in any way. I'm just trying to be fair to everyone.
Right. And my second question is the next school year calendar that has been finalized at this point. I guess my question is when that will be published? And that's it for me.
Thank you. At the conclusion of public commentary, we'll come back and try to hit what we can in terms of those questions. So thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to provide public commentary? Moving on to Zoom, Mrs., I'm sorry. Okay, moving on to Zoom, Mrs. Silver, I believe you had your hand up. If you could unmute and state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Heather Silver, Quell Run. Communication is a cornerstone to anything successful.
Communication is a cornerstone to anything successful. But why has it become such a struggle in Warren? I'll share some facts. The one Warren logo contest garnered at least five emails to my last count. And in addition, a survey from the same group was requested to only be completed by families that have been here two years or less. An odd window to use as a proper sample group, drawing on past district administration experience by parents that have been here six years or more, doesn't seem to factor in. The dress code and allergy season reminders each got their own email. Dress code even got part of a Board of Ed meeting last year. The district calendar shows every sport, date, and location, but no notation of early dismissal, testing, or schedule changes anymore. Emails about testing when results illustrate the district's competency level across the state and county are still rampant. Evening repeats of school guidance presentations are now canceled, and parents are blamed for not attending rather than admitting to the organizers that no communication about them is shared with parents. So when they even know to attend if they choose to. Middle school has stopped sending daily emails and blamed the IT department, saying it was a drag on the servers. Yet I believe the elementaries still have morning news programs and announcements. Do twelve to fourteen year olds and their parents now hold superpowers to not need information anymore? I mean, server issues? Come on. I get more communication from my seventh graders' language arts teacher. Warren Middle School is the last stop before a part of a regional high school. To my understanding, Warren used to be feared by the other sending districts because of the level that the students came in by comparison. Also, to my knowledge, not any longer. In twenty twenty six, it will be ten years since the steep study on declining enrollment, which we all know now isn't a problem thanks to the overwhelming increase in housing. A time that though best illustrates optimal communication within a community. What that means is that the majority of families that started school before or during this time will be gone. This will make it much easier for administration to evolve with no parents left to reference how things used to run efficiently, effectively, and as they should. The reason people came to Warren was for things like this. And the complacency of too many people continues to baffle me. But that's the wrong word. Families just don't know what they don't know. That's the problem. But that's why I share. For a reason I still can't figure out, other than power and ego, our administration is systematically and quietly eliminating the communication link between parents and the district, and it shouldn't be tolerated nor permitted. Just because the sunshine notice doesn't explicitly state that the Board of Ed agenda should be shared with the community ahead of the meeting, just as it's posted and just as it has been for decades, doesn't mean that ending that is right. Morality and ethics have somehow flown out of the window in Warren for too many years now, and it's got to end. Yet now we're down to one Board of Ed meeting per month, departing from every two weeks, as had been the schedule forever, nineteen years I lived here. Easier for people to forget their grievances in between a longer window. Where do Warren's educational priorities lie any longer? Communication should be second only to the actual quality of the education in our schools, and parents need to demand more from our district once again. And with an influx of a hundred and eighty five, eight hundred and fifty three thousand dollars coming next year, serious consideration should be given to upgrading or actually restoring our communication system before new projects get attention or money. And since we all know new plans will hit our wallets very soon, now is the time to push back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver. There's Nancy, if you could kindly unmute and enable your camera, please.
Hi, this is Nancy Andrews. I'm driving because we just had our reading fair at ALT School, so I don't know if I can unmute. But thank you. I'm a teacher at ALT and at Woodland, and I'm the President of the WTA. I just wanted to invite everybody who has not yet signed up to attend our blood drive, which will be taking place on May first. They the sign up has been sent through the township's district community briefings each week. So there still is a link, and I believe there are only four more spots left. So I encourage anybody who can donate blood to donate blood here or otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. I hope the reading fair was a success. And we have, I apologize, I can't see the name. JR with their hand up.
Hi, that might be me, Jennifer Armao. Okay, thank you. Jennifer Armao, twenty four Briarwood Drive East. So the comments I want to make are very similar to what the other two parents just commented on. One of the things I wanted to tune into tonight was to figure out what's going on with the calendar for the school year without using our snow days. Just planning out the end of the year and seeing what's going on. That is something I'm very interested in hearing about. The other thing I wanted to make a comment about also is when it came time for the middle school play to happen, I know Mrs. Mack always sends out an email, you know, looking for students to purchase tickets to attend in August, and I realized that I wasn't getting the daily emails anymore from the middle school. So they are missed greatly. There's information in them that was really helpful. I love seeing kids that were caught doing something kind in that Wednesday list or whatever day they sent it out. And, you know, it's just a really nice way to get communication. I feel like you could never give the parents too much information. There is an Instagram page from the Warren Middle School PTO, and they just have these boxes with the date on it and like challah bread going on sale this day. And it's just real short. You know, a quick line about what's happening, and it's so helpful. I just feel like there needs to be a lot more communication coming out from the school district about what's going on. I feel like sometimes if I wasn't subbing, I would be missing out on even more information because I get bits and pieces when I'm in the school. It's even like, I know there's a seventh grade trip coming up next month. It would be really great to get parents on board with what's happening with that, with the date, with time, you know, where they're going, things like that. I just feel like there needs to be a whole lot more information coming out from the district. And lastly, I would like to really thank the middle school PTO parents that chaired the food days this year. It has been nothing short of phenomenal. It'll be greatly missed last year, and hearing about what's happening next year, I hope they're on par with the way the food service has been this year. They've been absolutely amazing. I know Rachel Walker, Heather Silva, Stacy Sackett, Felice Goldman, Jen Lomelna, they have put so much work into food days this year. It's been absolutely great, and I really enjoyed it. And I hope next year's food service is something on par with what our kids would like to eat and, you know, appealing to them. So I appreciate you looking into vendors and services, but please make it something that the kids are going to enjoy. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. So any additional members of the public who wish to participate in the second public comment section for this evening can be on any topic in the room, in Zoom. Seeing none. Is there a motion to close the second public commentary session?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the second public commentary for this evening has concluded. Dr. Mingle will turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. And Mrs. Zon or Mr. Hagel or anybody on finance, I'll give the first shot at kind of summarizing the question about the what the school lunch vendor process looks like. So there are essentially two different options. One is a company that comes in and runs the program, and the other is what Mrs. Zon was describing, which is you partner with another school district that already has a program. The problem with the former, which is what we had intended to do all along, is that there are only eight approved vendors that can serve schools in Somerset County. But they're not from Somerset County. They're from other parts of the state. And so there are significant concerns about what that might look like based on the feedback we heard from the previous program when food is coming from a distance. So what we are investigating is whether or not a neighboring school district that has a food service program would have enough capacity, at least in the interim, until we have a permanent solution in the district to make the food at a much closer location, but in a way that complies with all the regulations. So that's what we're, we don't have a contract in place. That's the process that's going on right now to see what option would be the best for the district for next year with the long term goal of being able to make the food ourselves, which is something that is, until we can do that, most companies are not all that interested, to be frank, with bidding on our contract because of the quality concerns of not being able to make the food locally. As far as the calendar is concerned, the now that the board took action tonight, the updated calendar will be on the district website tomorrow. We'll make sure that it's in the community briefing on Friday as well, which kind of is the connection to the communication topic as well. So we probably about five years ago or so now, we did, we brought in an outside agency to do a communications audit of the school district, and that included focus groups, surveys, all kinds of information gathering, and then recommendations about the practices that should be looked to do over the next couple of years. One of the pieces of feedback that we received in that was that the primary at that time, this is pre COVID, which is important to point out, that at that time, one of the primary concerns was people getting bombarded with emails from their student's class dojo account or from school messenger or from a principal and from the district, and that these things were piling up. And what would happen is parents would mute them, and then they wouldn't get emergency communications from the district. So we made a shift to only sending one official district communication per week, which is the community briefing that comes out on Fridays, so that there would be one, except in emergent situations, district wide communication. And then principals make decisions about what happens at each school, and that varies from school to school, even from classroom to classroom to some extent. What has already started as a conversation and is probably reflected by the board's movement of communications to the Personnel and Negotiations Committee is it's probably time to reevaluate those things and see in a post-COVID environment, what's working, what's not working, where can we make improvements? And I suspect that as we get into priority setting for the twenty three, twenty four school year, you will hear the board talking about that at its July retreat, I'm predicting. And for everybody, we do a survey in May each year since we've adopted our current strategic plan where we ask for community feedback about what our priorities should be in the next year of strategic planning. There will be a question on that survey about whether or not communications such as an app or some other kind of two way communication that might be different than the way we've done it in the past, whether that should be one of the top priorities for next school year for the district to dig into. So I would encourage everyone, when that opportunity comes about, it'll probably be, I want to say around the second Friday in May or so is when the survey would be live in the community briefing. We would give several weeks for people to fill it out. We'll make sure it's posted on our social media accounts as well. But to give your feedback, if you believe that that should be one of the top priorities, that then means it would become a strategic plan action team, which has community member involvement on it. And if you want to be involved on those community teams, all you have to do at the end of that survey is say, keep me in mind next year when we put together the teams, we invited everyone who said yes to that in last year's survey to be part of the process this year, and we'll do that again for next year. So hopefully that helps clarify a little bit. Some of the comments are building specifics, so I won't go into those, but I I can't speak on behalf of the board, but I think at least for the administration, and I'm pretty sure board members feel this way too, communications is a high priority that we'll be talking more about.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to executive session.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA ten four dash eleven permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss specific prospective or current employees, unless all who could be adversely affected request an open session. Action will not be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately fifteen minutes, and be it further resolved that the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. The board is in executive session for approximately fifteen minutes.
Motion.
Oh, are we, are we good here? Okay.
Who was the second?
Mr. Otto's second here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, the board is back in public session.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Valentino, that was quick. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed abstentions. Board meeting has concluded. Thank you everyone for your time. Have a wonderful evening.